Please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item is the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second, motion to second, any discussion? Bob? Okay, all those in favor of the agenda as presented signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Minutes for approval, 11/25/2019.
Make a motion to minutes for November 25th, 2019 be accepted as presented.
Second.
Okay, motion to second, any discussion, additions, corrections?
I only found one minor thing on page five. One, two, three, four, kind of either the fourth or fifth paragraph down, the budget needs to be finalized by the second meeting in December to get the warnings done, not warrants. That's all I found.
Back, anything else?
Yeah, a couple things. What do we do about the motion that was not made or seconded on the approval of the minutes from the 11th of November?
We can redo it if you want.
Doesn't matter to me, I just wasn't sure about the legality of it.
What's our parliamentarian think of that?
Well, I think it would probably be best to redo that.
Okay, someone make a motion, is that it? Well, let's make that, let's make that motion first, then we'll do the regular, or you can put them together if you want, either way.
I would move that we approve the minutes of 11/11/19 for the regular meeting. Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, any other corrections?
Yeah.
One more thing. The public meeting on 11/11/19, we had the same issue.
We exited executive session at 9:00 PM, but adjourned at 8:16 PM. So.
Get that correction. All right, Dick, you wanted to go back to?
Yeah, I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the minutes for the public meeting of 11/11/19 as well.
Second on that?
A second.
Okay, any other discussion on it? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any other corrections? If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion passes. Citizen comments?
Yep.
Not yet, not yet. Hold on Julie, hold on. We got you on the agenda.
Yep, but I'm here for citizens' comments too, I have two things to say.
Oh, all right, go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Would you like to go first, or would you like me to go first?
You start up first.
Okay. So, yeah. So I'm Julie Finnegan, and I am a, on a committee. We're passing out right now an invitation to attend a meeting, that's kind of the little culmination of what we've been working on here in Rutland County. And this is?
Yeah, I'm Nicole Race, and I'm the home-to-school liaison for Slate Valley School District. So I've been working really closely on the Vermont Youth Project, project that we've been doing. It's a model that we have adapted from Iceland, and we've surveyed all of our students, 7th through 12th grade. And based on that survey, they all, that all went to Iceland, the data will be coming back to us next week. And based on that data, they will give us a rollout of strategies and interventions and new things that we can do for the youth in our community around substance abuse, after-school activities, peer relations. I mean, really, the survey was a number of questions around really everything, family life, school life, to really find out how do we best support our youth in this community, so.
And so to backtrack a little bit, I think we were approached in April of last year, our school board was approached. Rutland City was given this, it was actually free, which is pretty amazing. So Iceland did this whole, they used to have the highest youth drinking percentage in the entire world. Okay? And they got together as a country and said, we can't have this, like, we need to do something about this. And over a 10-year period, they developed a way to shift it, and they now have the lowest youth drinking and substance abuse, and the highest literacy rate. So they did a whole switch in 10 years, okay? So they started rolling this out in different countries, I think there's 30 countries that have done this, and we are the first in the United States to do this. Rutland City got it, and then they were looking for a satellite, and they approached Slate Valley. So all of us surveyed all our 12, 7th through 12th graders, it starts with a survey to kind of get a baseline about where we stand in this community when it comes to substance abuse, which I don't know if I need to get into any numbers or concerns, but it's high, and it's concerning. Especially the marijuana use is high and concerning in this county right now, probably all the state of Vermont, but we're focusing on this county. So we decide, everybody decided to get together and do this, we've been meeting monthly since April, and we had the students take the survey, now the results are back. We, like she said, we disseminate those next week, or this week, actually, no, the 18th, so next week in Burlington. And then based on that, we're doing a kickoff to try to get the community to understand that this is an issue, because we need community involvement, obviously, to make this happen, because the way you solve this is not with our committee. The way we solve this is to engage Rutland County. And this isn't just, even though we're the only ones that took the survey, Rutland and Fairhaven, this is for all of Rutland County. Whatever we develop, we are encouraging all high schools to send students, all families to be a part of it. But we needed to start somewhere, so that's where we started with. And their pilot, so it's a pilot in the United States, and we are the pilot site. So we wanted to come and share this with you, because obviously it affects Castleton, right, because those students go to Slate Valley. This is the roll-up that we're doing, I believe Dave Walk is our keynote speaker, and then we will go into disseminating all the information, and we're, I believe we're also looking to gather some thoughts and ideas too, based on this community meeting. And after that, we will continue to reconvene as a committee and continue to do community outreach until we have a plan that really engages youth in this community in safer, more effective, just better choices in after-school and how they spend their free time. So that's what this is, and that was citizens' concern part of why I was here.
Thank you Julie.
But do you guys have any questions on any of this? It's a pretty, pretty intense deal. And we will definitely, I can't go next Thursday, but Nicole's gonna go, and then I was hoping she could come back and maybe we would kind of give you the numbers that came out of this and the conversation that came out of this, so you guys are aware as we start to develop things that are gonna include the Castleton community in the solution to this really problem. And this is a long-term thing, this isn't like, oh, one survey, one and done, this is every other year, I believe?
We're actually doing it annually, for the first five years, we'll be resur surveying the kids, and the real goal, the goal truly is to build a community coalition, we're hoping district-wide of everyone involved, you know, outside of school and parents, we really want a strong showing of like community involvement to really support our youth, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Any questions from the board?
Just got a comment, congra, I don't know what the right word is, but thank you for your efforts.
Yeah, no, no problem. And we're, this is going to all the select boards in our, in our Slate Valley. We're telling all the towns about it, we're asking all the towns to be involved, we're looking for people who want to be involved, and I believe at the meeting you'll find other ways if you feel so inclined to be involved in this. But we'll just keep reporting back, because I think it's really important that everybody knows the information and how we're doing, and we're gonna, we're gonna go like this, right, guys? We're gonna, we're gonna try something, and it might not go well, and we might be back at the drawing table and getting more, getting more solutions or more examples and going back at it again. This is a long-term thing that we're committed to, so you'll hear from us again.
Sometimes part of the process is figuring out, figuring out what doesn't work.
Yeah, it's very true, it's very true, and Iceland did it too, that's why it took them 10 years, it wasn't like it happened overnight.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're very welcome.
Any other citizens' concerns? Yes, Susan?
Not a concern, just a congratulations. I thought Saturday's events were wonderful and well-attended. I could hardly get in the door at the firehouse, it was, it was a really busy place, and I just thank you for taking the initiative, it was wonderful.
Well, too, it was, it was the hard work of a few, select few, not me, I just supported it, and so.
Well, it's what we need, support, yeah.
Okay, thank you, anything else, citizens' concerns, items not on the agenda? If not, Julie, you're up again.
I'm up right away, all right. So now I'm here with my other hat on, which is the school board chair. So now, sure, Nicole's here, because Nicole's a part of this as well, as she works at the school district. So the cover of this is based on our November 20th meeting that we already had, where we did a tour of the high school, and had a lot of information up about what we're looking at and what we're proposing for our bond. So that's the cover of that, but the rest of the information is exactly what we covered at that meeting, or at that open house event. And we hope to have another open house event in January as well, to invite people to come back and ask more questions as we get more detailed. So November 20th was definitely no, not a lot of minutia in there, okay? We need, we needed feedback for that, and we needed to regather and reconvene and have more conversations about that. So what this is, is this is, the document tells you kind of what we're looking at. In a nutshell, I believe you guys understand, being town select boards, that the amount of infrastructure issues that I think we have accumulated, and we're not the only ones in the state, the entire state of Vermont is this way with their buildings. Infrastructure issues in all of our buildings, in all of our towns, in various ways. And you can go through and read about all the different things, the water in Benson, the roof in Castle, I mean, there's, there's something in every school that needs attention, that alone by itself, we might be able to put in a budget. But together as a group, we cannot, okay? They do not, they do not work in a budget. It's like a house mortgage, it's time to put money into our house, okay? So we need to do this for our infrastructure. As we were looking at our infrastructure, and as we have now consolidated and Orwell is fully enfolded into our school district, okay, so we are now all one, Orwell's there, we're all one school district now. We decided that we have been talking about for, see Trevor Ezzo was on the high school board for 17 years, he's been talking about it since day one, about unifying a middle school. It isn't a new conversation, okay? It's a conversation that we felt we needed to address that we've been having, and we felt like the time was right to do it. We have a shrinking population, which is putting our education in jeopardy in some of our smaller schools. We need to pull our students together to be able to offer a 21st century education. So that's what we are looking to do. It's an autonomous middle school, it's only connected by one section, other than that, it's autonomous. There's some shared space that is easily shareable due to scheduling, when you come to performing arts, music, maybe some gym use, okay? So that's kind of where we're at, so you put that all together, the number falls in around 60 million, okay? Give or take a couple million on either end, and depends on what the legislature does with school construction, too. It's on the agenda, when the legislature starts back up in January, to reinstitute school construction funding. So that could help. So also in there are, I believe, some tax numbers, and tax numbers will be going out as well, when we look, we are using last year's numbers to give you an idea, right, because nobody has this year's numbers, okay? So we're giving you an idea, it's a draft. And another thing that you'll start seeing coming around is trying to get people to understand how the Vermont state funding formula works, which I don't know how much knowledge you guys have about that, it's extremely complicated, and extremely, uh, not equitable, in my opinion, but... To give a simple example, when Stowe decides to keep their heat at 74 degrees, we are all paying for it. Because their budget, just like everybody else's, goes up to the state and comes back and just gets disseminated to all of us. So if we choose to wear sweaters and keep our heat at 55, even though we're keeping ours low, they're keeping theirs high, it all goes in the pot, and it all comes back, we're helping each other. Woodstock's looking at building a new school, South Burlington put a $200 million bond number out there the other day. Who just passed, Burlington, for 70 million, they just added 21 to it to make it 90. We are all absorbing that cost within our funding, we are helping them become better education systems. It's our turn to become a better education system. So we want to take advantage of the moment, and we want to take advantage of the opportunity, we're unified now, we have flexibility between schools and teachers and staff to move and do what we need to do, and this would be the ultimate form of really getting our numbers where we need them to be, in a consolidated spot. When you have one school, the biggest cost to anything, as you guys know, is personnel. 80% of our budget is personnel, budget, is personnel and benefits. So you put that together, if we can consolidate that middle school, we've been able to look at our personnel and be able to make better decisions with our personnel. So there's a lot of information that goes into this. But we're, we will be presenting the final numbers, as you know, to be on the March ballot, I believe we have to have them by January 28th. So we're looking to approve our budget and look at the bond language by January 21st, I think it's our school board meeting, to do that. So any questions anybody can think of, throw them at me, go ahead.
No, wait a minute, hold on.
That's right.
Time out.
Yep.
Any board questions?
Any board questions?
Julie, what if this doesn't fly, and then what's your next step?
We are back at the drawing board, looking as to why it didn't fly, and then what do we need to do? So, you know, if it comes back and the, and the community says, you know, we want to do infrastructure, but we don't want a unified middle school, we want you to stay inefficient, then we will stay inefficient, and we will put it back for an infrastructure bond.
Now, that's your, that's your opinion, inefficient, that's your opinion.
Yep, yep. Yep.
Yeah.
But that's, that's the reality, Bob, you can say that's my opinion, but when you put it down on paper, automatically, we're gonna save $5 million by closing the Castleton Village School, it costs $5 million a year to run that school. Personnel, benefits, phone, electricity, maintenance, upkeep, fixing it, right away, that's gonna go.
I just find it ironic that Frank Taggart was called all kinds of names when he wanted to close that school, and I'm not gonna say that you were one of them calling it.
Yeah. I mean.
Now, all of a sudden, oh yeah, that's a good idea, close that school.
Yeah.
I mean, within a year and a half, everybody's changing their tune.
Well, we're also unified now, which makes it a lot different than Castleton closing that school. Before, we were individual units, right? We are no longer an individual unit, closing that school would have put those kids at the elementary school, which would have made for a whole different scenario in the town of Castleton. This no longer is the town of Castleton, because everything's gonna be spread out over six towns.
So nobody else saw this, this coming a year and a half ago?
We've been talking about this for 20-plus years. Unifying a middle school, unifying, not moving our middle schoolers to the elementary school, unifying the entire district.
I just, I just find it kind of sad that it wasn't brought up when Frank was pushing to close that school.
Maybe the times weren't right, maybe the, maybe the people on the board weren't there yet, Bob, we are now.
Any other questions?
And that happens all throughout history. Can we talk about the old Castle Medical Center and how that should have been the town hall? People would say, oh my God, so, I mean, history is history, right, and people have their ideas.
I understand, just a year and a half ago, I just, I just find it ironic that people say, oh, he's crazy, and this and that, and.
I don't know if I'd call it ironic, but.
Now, all of a sudden, a year and a half later, whoa, I guess it wasn't a bad idea. I just, I just want to point it out, that's all.
Unifying, but unifying, not moving them to the elementary school, two different things, but still closing that school.
Other questions in the board?
Yeah, just one for clarity's sake, Julie. If this project is going to cost approximately $60 million, as we stand now, I realize that the legislature may be getting involved and provide funding, but where does that $60 million come from?
Bond.
Right.
It's a bond vote.
And then who pays the bond?
See, it's spread out between six towns.
So the taxpayers in the six towns would have to pay that $60 million back. Not, so that has nothing to do with the bond, with the bond that's in Burlington?
No, because you have to understand, our, the way our funding source still happens is that bond money, it goes within our taxes, right? So our edu, see, this is why it's so hard to explain, I'll send you a video on education funding, it has to do with the yield that they set and the amount that they set per pupil spending. That comes back to us, is based on everybody's, what they do in their towns.
Well, forgive my confusion, but when you were talking earlier about Woodstock's new school and Burlington's two different projects, the total almost 300 million, it sounded to me like we were gonna be paying part of that as well, and I.
We are, because it all gets lumped in to the, to how the, how the yield and the education spending is set. Those all get lumped in to it.
So our infrastructure costs will get lumped in as well? So it's not quite that clear?
It's muddy as mud can be.
Okay, other questions?
I, I got one more.
Yeah.
Have you figured out, Julie, so much for every $100,000 for property?
Based on last year's numbers, it's $33 per $100,000 house, I believe, for the numbers.
That's what it would be, that's 60 million.
$179 dollars per $100,000.
Well, that's Laura, Laura, not Laura anymore.
That's the figure I, that's the figure you have in here.
Cheryl. So what is it?
$179 for every $100,000.
For every $100,000, based on last year's taxes, based on all of last year's stuff, the yield, the CLA, right, and all those numbers that go into it.
If the $60 million bond passed.
Yeah.
Could I clarify something here?
Based on last year, yeah.
You're saying 60 million.
Yep.
Bottom of page four, it says 64.5 million.
Yeah, so as that was put out, the architect even came back with more ways to shift and change. So this is, this is a fluid number. This is a number that we are working with the architect daily to look at different ways, and he's coming up with new and different ways, based on all the stuff that he's done, to save money here, save money there, what kind of doors are you using? Where it has to be a fire door or firewall, I mean, all the stuff comes back pretty much daily, weekly, Chris Cole gets kind of a new thing from the architect, as he's working to really hone the numbers down with what we want to do.
So back to the $179 dollars for 100, so if your property is assessed at 200, you would double the 179, and it would continue, and continue, and continue, okay? Talk a little bit about income sensitivity.
30.
Could you explain income sensitivity?
So you want me to complain, right? So the only thing that I know about income sensitivity, without having my cheat sheet in front of me, is that, I think it's 63, is it 63 or 66% of people in Castleton pay by income, not by property tax, not by property value?
It's in here somewhere.
79% of Orwell, or 76% of Orwell pays by income, not by property. And that income has to do with how much income you make annually, and I believe the threshold is 99,000, it used to be 79, but I think they just recently bumped it up to 99,000, is that correct? Your income sensitivity, yeah.
There's so many pages.
There's a cheat sheet, yeah, there's a cheat sheet to it, though, that says like what the numbers are for like the income threshold, and then you pay a percentage of your income, instead of paying on the value of your property.
Household income?
What?
Household, okay.
Household, now, does that apply just to residents of the community? They have to be residents?
Yeah, not non-residents.
So it would not apply to any second home owners?
Correct.
It would not apply to any landlords who rent property?
Correct.
And we have some that rent quite a bit of property.
Correct.
It would not apply to any businesses or industry, they'd all be paying the full amount?
Businesses are, well, it depends on if they're owned, right? Like, like me being a business owner, I pay by my personal income tax, I don't pay through Slate Valley, right? I pay through my personal. So if it's a personally-owned business, an LLC, right, I pay through my personal, I don't pay through my business. So businesses are not really effective.
Really, that would only apply to a relatively small number of people, and I, I wonder.
The income sensitivity?
Well, you've got the income sensitivity, and then you've got, of course, the number in there that's thrown out of $179 per 100. There's very little property in Castleton that's assessed at that amount.
At $100,000 or more?
Yes, very little. So you keep going from there. And what is the length to amortize the bond?
30 years.
So you'd be paying that for 30 years?
Mm-hmm. And, and as you get, I believe, I believe Cheryl has it in another handout that I don't, that is new and is being, gonna be sent out, about how the first two years are interest, I believe, on only what you have drawn down from the bond, so they would not be the 179, does that make sense? And then as you get closer, it becomes less because you paid off more principal.
Yeah.
So like the ends are different than the middle.
Yeah, as you go forward, you pay more in the principal.
Correct, correct, correct.
Any other questions?
How long in construction if we were, this was the passage?
Yep, so I am not 100% sure on this, but I believe that we have talked about that we would build the middle school, move the high schoolers into the middle school, to do the high school renovations, because the high school needs a ton of renovations.
Okay, okay.
A ton, I really encourage.
Where's that information coming from? It needs a ton of renovations, I'm not questioning it.
From Chris Cole, no, no, Chris Cole, chief of operations at Slate Valley. Chris Cole, he has been doing, since he was hired, day one, when we got together about three years ago and became a group, he has been going through building by building, piece by piece, door by door, tile by tile, handle by handle, and I kid you not, and figuring out, are we ADA compliant? Where are we not? What needs to be replaced, what's dangerous? And he has slowly been trying to chip away at the, obviously, the most emergency things first, but we're down to things like boilers, elevators, roofs, heating systems, all that, windows, we're, we're kind of, now we're to the point where we fixed every doorknob and every way a door opens, right? Little things like that, widths of doors, things like, we're down to now the huge stuff.
What's happened to the maintenance budget over the years?
So you'd have to talk, for Fairhaven Union High School, you'd have to talk to a Fairhaven Union High School board member. They are more than happy to admit that they have done nothing.
What, did they have maintenance in their, have money in their maintenance every year?
Nope, not to, not to fix anything, only to clean, paint, and do your normal kind of.
Cosmetics.
Correct.
How about Castleton?
Castleton, a little bit better, we need a roof, it's about 32 years old, the roof at Castleton Elementary School. We need a roof, we did our heating and ventilating pretty recently, so we're pretty caught up on that. Our parking lot fell under Act 64, which I know you guys know about.
Yeah.
Our parking lot in the Castleton Elementary and at Fairhaven Union High School fell under that law. So what does that mean? You gotta fix that whole parking lot because of the runoff. The Act 64 with the, you know, over three acres, yeah. So Ca, the Castleton, and I don't know if anybody's been up the elementary school, but that big ice pocket that develops right in, right where the two first parking spots over, and we have to put pallets across for kids to get across and teachers to get across, because it's a big divot in the parking lot. So things like that is where we're at. The Fairhaven Grade School needs an elevator, their elevator's not ADA compliant, so they, they need a new elevator at Fairhaven Grade School. Orwell has a serious heating problem, if you go down in their basement, all their brick is disintegrating from the air down there. So they need some new brick and some new structural supports, and they have some air quality issues. Benson has, has had water issues ever since I've been on the board, so Benson has some water issues you need to take care of, so just, we're to, we're to the big things.
All right, any other questions? And, just, I'll, I'll get right to you, Susan. Anything else on the board?
No.
No, Susan?
How will this then affect the quality of education that each one of these children will receive?
Yep, so this is education philosophy, but we all went to school in a mall. We had a hallway down the middle, and we had stores off the hallway. We went to math, we came out, we went to social studies, we came out, we went to English, we came out. Education paradigm, and education paradigm is shifting to be more teamwork-oriented, more makerspace-oriented, more group-oriented, and so the way we would look at doing is opening up more rooms, allowing for more spa, more movable classrooms. So you and I would all walk in, and we have desk, 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 we'd all sit in our desk. Tables with rolling wheels, things that can come apart, make bigger groups, so changing how teachers are able to teach and work and together as well. So instead of having just a social studies room and just an English room, what's wrong with reading a history book and teaching English around your history book? Two teachers working together to develop what's happening, and so that, setting up, right now, our education is dictated by our space, by how our space is set up is how we have to teach. Teachers would like to teach how they know it works, but they can't in this setting. So that middle school would be more open, there'd be more movable classrooms, it would be two groups of, two groups of kids called two pods, each would have whatever teachers they need, but it would be a lot more group learning. And then the high school as well, we would be more, do more sectional learning, so you'd have all your math together where they can come out and talk to each other, not shut your door, go in your room, teach your math, and never talk to another teacher. It's definitely more group-oriented, so.
How will you, how will you guarantee that every student is successful, that he or she can go out into the world and function?
So that's the goal.
You know, 60 million is a lot of money for bricks and mortar, but what we're looking at is students that are not there.
Yeah, yeah.
Not there.
Yep.
You know, when you look at the, the difference between the education, my husband went to burn burning.
Yep.
You know, you're talking about the child.
Yeah.
And.
Yep, yep, I hear you.
This is what we all want for every child.
Yeah, no, I agree. And no, nobody can guarantee every single child. I think we can guarantee that that's our goal, and that if that's our vision, and that's our future, and that's our endpoint, then everything that we do should be towards that goal, right? I think Act 77 has pushed us that way, which is the flexible pathways law that allows students to earn credit and time outside of school by doing internships and all that kind of stuff. Well, you can't do that if you don't have the infrastructure to support that. So in, in our, in our actual regular budget, we're putting in for two minivans, so that we can drive kids to internships to allow them to get credit, for those kids that are not the ones that want to sit in class, but want to maybe do a trade or get a specific job. So those type things are coming too. So yeah, I mean, I don't think anybody can guarantee, I think it's the goal, and I think it's the goal of everybody that's, that is working in the school district right now. that is working in the school district right now, college and career-ready is, is what we're looking for, for every student, whether the plan lasts for six months and then it changes, as long as you have a plan when you're done, college or career-ready.
Good.
And this will be, the, the yearly budget will be on top of this?
Yes, yeah, so that's your regular, kind of your regular taxes.
I was a teacher, I understand, I support education.
Yeah.
But, this is tough.
Yeah, it is tough, but I'll tell you right now, I think, and I know, Jim, that you want me to be quiet for a second, but I gotta say...
Never, Julie, I know, I know it's a waste of time.
I have to say, we are at a pivotal point in Rutland County right now, we have schools that are losing population way faster than we are and are gonna have to make some way bigger decisions than we have to make, and they are right on our doorstep, do we want them coming to Western Rutland County or do we want them going to Rutland City, where do we want our population to come from, the only place we're gonna gain population right now is from the schools that are not doing as well as we are, so we might be losing students, but...
Okay, can I ask you one more question? What does your operational budget look like for next year in money?
I, you know what, we haven't even put it together yet, but we're looking at the same as last year.
Haven't put it together yet?
No, November is the month that we meet and talk about that, we've been making some decisions about staffing, we have a finance committee meeting actually tomorrow at five-thirty where we're starting to put together, but we don't, and we don't even get the yield from the state of Vermont until December, if we're lucky, last year we got it at the end of January, but that's besides...
Okay, thank you, any other questions?
But I think it was twenty-six million last year?
Somewhere in that vicinity.
So, I don't think it's gonna be much different.
Much different.
I still don't know if we got a timeframe, I know you said you had to move the high school students to the middle school.
Yep.
How long, how long before the middle school is gone?
You know what, I don't know, I, I don't know the answer to that, other people have been through that process, somebody remembers being through the process when they added on to the actual high school, the science wing, how they were moved out for a certain number, but I'm, I mean, it'll be year-round construction, so...
I didn't know if we're talking two to three years or we're talking five to seven years or...
Put it this way, if it all passes and we get a bond in the summer in the bond, summer bond market, because, you know, bonds are only certain times a year, we're looking at opening in twenty-twenty-three, does that give you an idea?
Yeah, yeah.
So, if it passes and everything goes on thing, twenty-twenty-three for a middle school.
That's pretty aggressive, okay.
Yeah, well, gotta start somewhere, Dave.
Oh, I don't mind that, I think it's gonna be aggressive.
All right, yeah, definitely hand them out.
Okay, move on to the off-road diesel, Mike, that's quite a change, the off-road diesel.
Yeah, off-road diesel of this year is gonna be about sixty-five million, no, it's...
Sixty-five, wow.
We have three quotes, the lowest quote was from Sam's for two dollars and thirty-two cents, we've used them in the past, no issues with them, I recommend you go with the lowest quote for thir, two dollars and thirty-two cents per gallon, and that's a blend, sixty-forty blend.
I will make a motion that we award the off-road diesel quote for this coming year to Sam's for two dollars and thirty-two cents a gallon.
Second?
Motion to second, any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
I wanna refuse myself, please.
Oh, that's right, I forgot, Bob, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I was in my oil, Winston.
Yeah, hopefully.
Waste water qualifications, Mike?
Uh, you skipped one.
What did I skip?
Nemrick.
Oh, Nemrick, I'm sorry, yeah, I've got it right in front of me.
So, in your packet, it's just the letter from Nemrick, I, I did include this number, that three thousand five hundred and thirty-nine dollars, the difference from what we're paying now to the new service in the budget, so you have that, but I'm recommending that we go with Nemrick and not switch what we do, and that's, and I, I explained to you what Nemrick does for the town or how we use it, so if you have any questions about it, I can answer them, but if not, I would recommend that we switch, or we don't switch out to another program, we stay with Nemrick.
Motion, demo, got questions, Ryan?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second, questions? Joe?
I, I guess, Mike, I'd be interested in knowing whether we have an idea of what similar towns in the region are spending for these services.
They're all, most of the ones I, that we deal with locally here are Nemrick, so they're all gonna face this upgrade, it's been, for years, it's been stable at about sixteen hundred dollars, and now with the way that, and it's in this, in here, the way it's changing in the services, it's, especially their, their upgrades is, it's a, I mean, I guess we, we live a lot of years for a decade or so with hovering around sixteen hundred dollars and, and they're, they're changing the way they're doing business and this is our taxes, our, how we do everything, tax bills to our assessor using it for property stuff, that's how we generate tax bills, Melanie uses it for accounting, for our operational budget and everything else, so it's, it's tied across, our town clerk uses it, so it's, it's tied into everything we do that has money inside to it.
Great.
I have one question.
Dick?
Just a quick one, Mike, I realize this is a pretty well, is a pretty well-oiled machine right now and I don't know that we want to break it, but what, what, if any viable options would there be?
There are other systems out there, I, I can't speak on them because I haven't done any kind of detail with them, but there's a learning curve with switching to anything, so, maybe in the future to talk about it, but right now, when this came out in this budget year, I would recommend that we don't mess with it this year and look at it maybe for the future, give me a year to look at what's out there, but this is, this would be a huge undertaking to change systems and, and, you know, carry everything over and migrate it.
No, I don't really understand that, I just was curious if there was anything that had already, you'd already stumbled across that might be a viable option.
I haven't.
Because at this point, like I said, it's a well-oiled machine and I really don't want to break it at this point.
Any other questions?
No.
There's not a question, but I, I'd kind of like, perhaps with Dick, I would hope that before we renew this contract, you've had the opportunity to do some research.
I'm for, it'll give me a year now to start working on it, where this, this letter came out, you know, not too long ago, sir, what was it, November nineteenth, this letter came out, so we didn't have much time to react to it.
And it may well come to pass that there are no other really comparable options, there might be less expensive options, but they may not provide the service we need, so, you know, at least would like to have that explored.
Agreed.
Okay, no other questions, all those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Waste water qualifications, Mike?
So, the wastewater qualifications for engineering services, solicited statements of qualification, we had, we only had two agencies that responded, one was Aldridge and Elliott and DuBois and King, I met with both of them here in, in town, I met with Wayne Elliott at the wastewater treatment facility and I met with representative from DuBois and King here, town office, looking through their qualifications, they're, they're both qualified to do wastewater, stormwater, drinking water, but looking through, in, in its totality, we've used Aldridge and Elliott since day one with, with our system, they know our system, they don't have to relearn it, they just, three years ago, did the ten-year study for us, which identified areas where, are gonna need replacement, like the sewer lines or pump stations and stuff, so, they're really intimately familiar with our system and I would recommend that, when I rank order to them, I, I put Aldridge and Elliott first, I'd recommend that we use them, I seek your approval to move forward with them for our twenty-year upgrades for the wastewater treatment facility, and, and not write off DuBois and King, they also do stormwater, which you know that we've applied for several grants, so hopefully they would come back and apply for that, because I, in my research, they're really, they're probably better than Aldridge and Elliott as far as their, their, their history with stormwater than they are wastewater, so, it just seems maybe the right thing for, to go with Aldridge and Elliott and we'll send our bid packages back out for stormwater and hope we get as many people as possible to send us their, their qualifications, but I'd like to go with Aldridge and Elliott for our sewer upgrades moving forward.
Do you need a motion?
Aren't we gonna get a, aren't we gonna get a proposal from them, a financial proposal?
Well, first, we have to go, we have to get the engineer, then they go ahead and do all the, the background and then they'll, they'll come back with a proposal on what needs, what they're recommending needs to be repaired, fixed, and a cost estimate with everything, but we can also use the state revolving fund loan process for paying for the, a portion of engineering services as well, so, and I talked to Mr. Elliott and they're very familiar with how, how that works and it's part of the process, they would help us get that put together.
So, do you need a motion, Mike, or just our authorization?
Yeah, your authorization to, we're choosing Aldridge and Elliott for our wastewater treatment facility, collection system, engineering services.
Let's see if I can word this right, I'll make a motion that we authorize the town manager to proceed with the Aldridge and Elliott for the wastewater treatment facility and collection system engineering proposal?
Services.
Services.
Second.
Any comment, motion to second, comments, questions, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Planning Commission to discuss solar projects, Janet? Janet Curry, Chair of the Planning Commission?
So, Peter Guy said these, I'm not sure how to say his last name, to your meeting two weeks ago, then came to our meeting proposing two sites, two five-hundred kilowatt sites, essentially on the south and north side of exit five, the board is, after several questions to Peter, has not made a decision yet, we'll probably do that tomorrow night, but the board is getting concerned about the number of solar projects that are, have been started, somewhat in completion and proposed, so, we are suggesting that possibly we have a bit of a moratorium on any solar proj, projects until we can establish an energy plan, which we would do with the aid of Rutland Regional Planning Commission, the reason for this is because the planning commission is concerned about Castleton not being basically a seized by all the projects that might want to come in here, so, we're asking the board's permission to have a bit of a moratorium.
Have any idea how long it would take to write that energy plan?
Well, concerning my time is a little bit freer now than it was three months ago, I can certainly dedicate quite a bit of time to it, I've spoken with Jonas about it, we basically can kind of cut and paste what other towns have done, but the concern here is, we have one fifty, we have a five hundred, this proposal is two, two five hundreds, and then there's the two-point-two gigawatt that wants to come in here and we are absolutely not supporting that, because it's on prime agricultural lands and it goes against the town plan, so, as our first concern is never to leave the town into litigation, we like to try to mitigate it a bit by having an energy plan, so we have cause when we object, if that makes sense.
Okay, is that it, Janet?
The only thing I just want to say is, for some of you don't know, we did get the municipal planning grant award for ninety-eight hundred, so we can start ripping apart zoning.
Questions from the board?
I don't know if this is a question or a comment, Jim?
Sure.
Or maybe a little bit of both, when the gentleman, and I do not recall his name, I'm horrible with names, was in here to the last meeting?
Pete.
Pete, you had to talk about the two projects.
Yes.
I was inclined to go along with the one on the town landfill site, because that's pretty much useless land anyways.
No, that's not the two sites.
Okay, yeah, that's true.
My understanding is that two sites, one is in front of...
The third site.
Yeah, but anyways, in part in that conversation where I was going with this is, that was the only one that I was primarily, you know, inclined to support at this point in time, however, he also was talking about maximizing the use of the substation and there's gonna come a point in time when they're not gonna be able to plug anymore into the grid in this area, and I'm wondering if this two-point-two megawatt one would even work at this point, that question occurred to me during that meeting, but he wasn't the guy to ask because it wasn't his project.
So, I did ask that question, and for whatever reason, I seem to go back to college physics and understand a lot of this, not willingly, so, before, when we go back to the general dollar, one fifty kilowatt wanted to go in, they couldn't go in until the five hundred kilowatt went in and, and made the upgrades to the substation, well, there was obviously huge arguments at the moment because the person who had to put, to supply the funds in order to do the upgrade said it was unfair, so now, everybody shares the costs for the upgrades, my question to Peter was, well, how do I know the community is safe, like, how do I, how do we know if, if these upgrades, if something was to go, you know, let's just say it just goes right out the door, how do we know that the, the homes that are surrounding the substation, so and so on, and he's like, oh, it's no big deal, it's just like putting in a new fuse, and I said, well, I disagree with you in that, so, I said, I want to see a full report on that, so he is going to supply that, at some point, you know, the only entities that are benefiting from this is the landowner and the solar company, so, I want to see more, if you're gonna come in and you want to do this, I want to see what you're gonna do for the town of Castleton, because as right now, you can correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, but, you know, the municipalities, we already buy our, our energy credits from two solar fields over in South Royalton, correct, so, we've met our capacity, I don't know about the water and sewer, but I don't know what Castleton University is doing, I don't know what the school system is doing, but the town of Castleton isn't benefiting, yes, they're benefiting from tax revenue, but the town itself is not, so, I need, we need to see more, we need to see what else, especially the fact that before, they were proposing these were only twenty to twenty-five years, that's not true, because I questioned him on that, I said it's more like thirty, thirty-five years, and he did admit that it was thirty to thirty-five years, that these arrays would be around, so, we, as the planning commission, have not decided a few preferred sites yet, we're gonna talk about that in tomorrow night's meeting, you're all welcome to attend if you have questions, and so whatever our decision is, you know, obviously, we will report to the select board, I think for a safe request on the moratorium, maybe five months.
Okay.
But that's up to you.
All right, any other questions from the board?
I'm just not clear, yeah, on the solar fields that go in here, they have to use our substation, they have to go there, so you're not taking into consideration the one just across the Pulteney line here on Blissville Road?
My understanding is just ours, unless you know something different.
No, no, I'm asking you, like, the solar field over in South Royalton, they can't use a sub, different substation than South Royalton Substation, I, I guess I'm not...
The substation is where the energy comes, the field, the closest substation is what the fields, or...
That's what they have to use, they can't ship it to a different...
No, it's gotta come in and go out.
It, where it comes into, so they gotta be able to handle that in, that influx of energy, so...
It's into GMP and then GMP distributes from there.
That's fine, so the substation, or the solar field down on Blissville Road, how do you know where that, where that power is going?
It all goes back to GMP.
To a certain substation, no, I mean, correct? So, it may be flooded already, to your knowledge, I mean, how, how do you keep track, how do we keep track of? We don't.
That's not our responsibility.
We don't.
Thomas did talk about it, there was, there was only one substation in town that had a, a good amount of capacity still, everything around here is kind of...
So, the ones he's proposing still has room in our substations, what I'm getting at?
Correct.
So, when that room's gone, you won't have to have your moratorium, there won't be six or seven more fields coming in if that substation...
Unless they decide to buy, to build a new substation.
Well, that's, yeah, it's got something to do with infrastructure. I, I just curious, I just, you know, we're talking about putting a moratorium on it, our substation's not even...
It, it max out whatever, if they build in here where it has to be, get fed into that line, that distribution, then it's gonna max out at some point, and then they have to make choices of what they're gonna do next, that's all.
Okay, other questions from board, Dick, you got some?
Oh, I have two, first question is one that probably no one, including Janet, has an answer to, meeting several months ago, our fire chief brought up a concern that at the time, the, and I don't recall, I think it was Sandlot was here at the time, but don't hold me to that, he brought up a concern if we had to respond to that for any sort of an issue, you know, could be, you know, a fire, a forest fire, a plane crash, you know, who knows what, how much exposure is there to our firemen from those... knows what. How much exposure is there to our firemen from those arrays? And this guy assured us that there wasn't a problem. But I've since read stuff on the internet, and we all know everything on the internet is true, that that may or may not be the case. So that's a question that we probably should get an answer to, and I'm not sure it's appropriate for you to do that, Janet, but-
I would check with the town's liability.
Somebody needs to get an answer to that question.
Or the ACT.
And the other thing that just occurred to me right now, and I was thinking back to a fire we had on Creek Road several, quite a few years ago now, where the power lines were burnt through and laying in the road, and arcing and sparking, and Green Mountain Power couldn't get a truck there immediately. They could get there in 30 minutes. So they remotely shut down the substation to make it safe for, you know, the bystanders, the firemen, everyone around the scene, which meant quite a few people in Castleton lost power for a short period of time, you know, half an hour, an hour, but at least nobody died. The question is, if these things are out there generating power, and the sun's out and the sun's shining, and they drop the substation, will that actually cut the power or not?
Power, I dealt with this-
You know, it's like, you know, having a battery feed back through, or your, you know, your generator feed back through.
Things can backfeed, but when I was, when I was in the city, I had to deal with this. They have shut offs on those, on all these places now. So as long as the sun, that's generating, it's going to generate power. So the only way to cut it is through manual means, is to shut it down on the, on the house so it doesn't backfeed through the system. But if you, but it's still, if you grabbed a wire that's leading from the, from the, from the panels to that, that box, those are still hot.
But if we're at a fire someplace else, that's not, doesn't have a solar panel on the roof and doesn't have, you know, and they drop the grids to make it safe for us when we're out there as firemen, will it be safe? It's a question that nobody here has an answer to, but it's one that we really need to get.
No, I know. It can backfeed. I know that. So if someone starts a generator and it's plugged in their house, it can backfeed. So, yes, until it's shut off, so it can't get to that line, it can backfeed.
Okay.
I was, I think I hear you saying, Janet, that you would urge the select board not to support the proposals that were presented at our last meeting, the ones at exit five, north and south.
I'd rather put that question aside until, and answer it at the next select board meeting because the board needs to make that, the planning commission. It starts with the planning commission if they decide it's a preferred site or not. So the board has to decide on that. And I want a full board, and I don't think I'm going to get a full board tomorrow night because for whatever reason, it's hunting season and we all know who's hunting. So-
So you'd like us to defer that decision until you've had a full meeting of the planning commission?
Yes. Yeah. And as for the moratorium part of it, it's just, I'd like to try to get an energy plan down on paper for the board to adopt so we have a better outline of, you know, who's coming in and asking to put in these solar panel arrays.
Are you sure the board can do that without approval of the voters? I just asked the question. I don't know the answer. I'm not an attorney in court, but you always know the answer to the question before you ask it.
I think so.
You think so? Okay. That, I think that is a valid question.
It's a zoning question.
Yeah, sure.
So, I mean, you know, do we have a right to dictate to property owners what they do with their property? We have zoning. Yeah, to some extent.
Okay. Any other questions? Do we just not have to take any action on this this evening, pending the meeting of the full planning commission?
Yeah.
And you will have a recommendation to the board, to this board?
We'll put up a formal proposal.
Okay. I don't think we need a motion for that. Okay? Yes, Susan?
If we are having solar installations in our town, is there a way that the municipal buildings can benefit from these installations and receive solar power?
We already are.
Mike, we already are.
We're, we're purchasing net metering credits through Green Lantern Solar, but the arrays in South Royalton, so it doesn't matter where in the state it is. You're just buying net metering credits through GMPs, the process. So-
I'm not talking about credits. I'm talking about actual green energy supporting our municipal buildings.
Well, you, I, you probably know the answer, that to outfit these buildings with something that would run off solar power would be a, an upgrade to this, we can't just run batteries and all those type of things. So we're getting a benefit of the sun, the green energy, through our net metering credits. That's how we are, that's how we're using the green energy ourselves. So it's, it's reducing our electric bills. It's through every municipal building that we have, not everyone, but almost everyone. We still have a little bit of room for the sewer plant, which we're, been talking with Green Lantern Solar for that array that they're, they're going to put in behind Dollar General to maximize what, our savings, which ultimately goes into, you know, saves on the budget, basically.
Okay. May I recommend that you look forward a few years so that you can have battery storage eventually? And maybe some, some electric vehicles. You know, it's a long-term plan, but start thinking about this stuff.
Good. Anything else? And Doc will move on. Review of the proposed budget for approval. So you guys have it?
Pending your questions.
Discuss from there.
Yeah. Go ahead. We'll take a motion and then a discussion.
All right. I'll see. I will make a motion that we approve the fiscal year 2020, 2021 budget with a total expenditure line of $3,418,269 at a 2.5% increase.
Second that for discussion. Second for discussion. Okay, discussion?
When I went through it, there was, first off, I want to commend Mike on, job well done on crafting this budget. But secondly, the two items that left out at me were the reduction in the litigation line from, is it?
What page you wanted?
I don't remember.
I think it's five or six.
I noticed that as well.
Yeah, it might be page four. Hang on a second. I'll find it. Why didn't I put paper clips in like I did last year?
Six.
Did it go from 30 to 25?
It's six, halfway down.
Page six. I was looking at page six.
All right, I'll go back to page six.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I went from 30 to 25. And I'm not necessarily opposed to that. I just want to make sure that, that maybe you know something I don't, that, because we raised it from 20 to 30 last year because of all the-
Right.
-things that were going on. And do we anticipate less things now?
Well, we, we're not, we're not in a, no longer going into union negotiations. We had, in fiscal year 1819, we had $20,000 budgeted. We only spent $18,000. And so far this year, under a $30,000 budget, we spent $280.
All right.
We, we had all this litigation and it ended up in our favor, that it was covered through our insurance carrier. So we didn't, we had exposure, but in the end, it didn't come out of our coffers. It came through insurance.
And the second thing is, and I know these actual expenditure lines are kind of deceiving on the police car, that we're putting $17,000 a year into a reserve account for a police car. And every time we buy a police car, we have to figure out where the other, the money to equip it is coming from. So I'm wondering if that line is actually adequate or if we should increase it to, seems like we're about $4,000 to $5,000 short on each car. So if we changed it from 17 to 20, we would be there.
I don't disagree with that analysis. Depending on what years we buy cars, we tried to put it in their operating budget. So under their, it was just spent that year because we don't buy, if we don't buy a car every year, we'll build up money in the reserve that may not need to be there for that particular year. And then we get more money built up and it gets questioned on, on that. So six, one half dozen the other, whatever the board's pleasure is. But I would agree that past practice has been, the car gets purchased and then we have to spend $3,000 to $4,000 to equip it or, or transfer the equipment from one, have it transferred from one car to the other.
Don't misunderstand me. I'm totally in favor of being frugal and staying within the budget, but I just want to make sure that when it's time to equip our cops, they've got what they need.
Well, another approach to is, if we're getting rid of one car to get another, and we're not buying an additional car, the sale of the, of the car, because if we're trading them at pretty normal intervals while there's still trade, trade-in value to it, or sale, resale value, that money could, you could choose to put that towards that car.
Yeah, we're already replacing the Taurus, but the next one in two or three years will be one of the Explorers. And that will actually have some value, I think.
Yeah. With that-
What's going on with the Taurus? Time out. Time out. You all through, Dick?
I don't want to move to another subject.
No, we won't, Bob. We won't. Don't worry.
Well, did I not read in here, we're not selling the car that the Taurus, we're giving it to the second constable. So what you just said is not really factual.
No, go, go to the-
Did I not read that right? This is the problem of having all this information.
No, no, let's find the, the police budget and, pardon, I'm sorry, find the constable budget, which is on page-
I think I marked it in this one.
Page 15. 15.
It just, it was in red. It was, it said, give the, give the car to the second constable.
That, that was for discussion.
Oh, that's for discussion?
It was for discussion.
Because that was in-
Because I took the $2,500 that the, the second constable wanted for that, to buy that car, out of the budget. With it, with it, with an understanding that there would be probably an argument over it, but the Taurus could be, could be left right at the police department because it gets used for, the only time the, the second constable's been working now is working for the school resource officer. So it's really for the PD, not as a constable. If they kept that, which we don't own anything on it, we're paying insurance on it, it's still in a, it's not in a state of disrepair, that for another year, that stays over at the police department, and the second constable can use it from there if he works. But he hasn't been working. He has, I don't think he put one hour in besides going to the town, or the town meeting.
So what does he use now for a car if he's not using that one?
He had the Impala, but, so that, that got brought to the garage and Bob Ward inspected it, or inspected it to be inspected and said, I'm not going to put a sticker on it because the frame's rotted through. So that is a, no longer a viable car to use.
Okay, so the second constable's without a vehicle right now.
That's correct.
And this is your recommendation to give the Taurus to him?
Rather than put $2,500 in that budget, leave that there. We don't own anything on it. We don't have to worry about messing with it. And he can use it, and we'll see what happens in a year from now. And I, I have my, I have my outlook on where this is going to go. The first constable's not going to be here forever and ever. I had, I had a long conversation this week, and I think that leaving it status quo for a year, let him use that vehicle, we'll see a year from now, a change.
Okay. Other questions? Bob, you have others or that?
No, no.
I have one to Joe.
Well, hold on. I want to make sure I answered your question, Bob.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I, I think so. Other than, at one of the meetings not that long ago, the police chief said he was going to look into what he could get for that car. And I thought that's where we were at, but maybe that's-
No, no, that's, that's something that, that's still on the table. The question is, and I talked to Joe about this, is there's a $2,500 dispute here on how does Pete update or up, that new vehicle when he gets it, to be able to have the money to switch things over and, and stuff like that. That's, that's the question.
So say we give this to the second constable, then how do they get that money?
Well-
To equip the car, the new car?
Just through his, right now, his, his operating budget. And then I would say, you sell the, the Impala for what we can get out of it.
Scrap.
And, well, there's, there's stuff in it too. And then use that money to offset what the police department needs.
Okay. Is that it, Bob?
Yeah, for now, yeah.
Okay. Joe?
Yeah, this is kind of a question about the formatting and how, what this means, Mike. On page nine, in, in, sting in the police department section, we have a line, the first line, in fact, for personal services, where the, there is nothing budgeted, but the actual expenditure was 259 to 86. And then everything else below that is blank. So basically, are you just putting all of our expenditures for full-time personnel, part-time personnel, part-time administrative assistant into that actual personnel column?
Well, there's a difference between the actual personnel, because if you look on the first one, what it was budgeted, yeah, the, the second column is the, it is, it's the actual of all of those.
Okay, so you're just having broken it down by the subcategories that are listed there.
Correct, yeah.
In that same section, in part-time other, you in red mentioned the possibility of Castleton University paying 50% of the increase, and then say parenthetically, that's 5,000. I had a hard time understanding what that 5,000 meant. I mean, it, it looks like the increase from the current year to next year is 2,083.
Yeah. It, they gave 5,000 last year, Joe, so I just use it as a, as a sink going back and, and not increasing the number. And that went back into the general fund to offset the cost of the additional officers on Friday and Saturday nights.
Gotcha. Okay. Anything else, Joe? I probably do, but I'll let somebody else take a shot. I, I do have some others.
Okay.
No, I didn't have any questions.
Okay. Back to you. Dick, do you have other questions?
No, I went through with this with Mike on Sunday and was pretty happy with most of it anyways.
Okay. Bob, you need another shot, second round?
Not, not right now, no. I, I wasn't able to go through it with, with Mike, if you-
Okay, then I'll skip over.
There's a lot of stuff that was thrown at us here tonight, too. I mean, this whole folder.
Well, that's, that's, that's nothing to do with the number in here. That was just some backup data. That's all.
Okay. And this, this page, all this page stuff is just information on the-
That's, that just explains a lot of the stuff that was there, so.
Your turn again, Joe.
Page 12, the winter salt. Two years ago, we, we budgeted 64. We spent 100,000. This year, we have the same amount budgeted, and early in the season, we've spent, well, the end of October, 35,000 already. Do you think 82,000 is going to be sufficient?
It's, it's a, it's one of those crap shoots, Joe, that, not, not to overbudget. The thing about the highway budget is it carries over. So if we don't use it, it will carry over. But what we, in our, in our carryovers right now, we have money in there that's unassigned. So if we have a bad year like we did last year, we have the money in the operating budget that doesn't have to be passed on to the voters because we can use it out of their carryover.
Are you saying that if we needed more salt, we could use the highway carryover for that?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
And that way, it doesn't spike the budget. And, and that, what, that money's supposed to get used, it's not supposed to build up to be 300 or 400,000. That wasn't the intent of that carryover. And it got to the point where we had 384,000 in there. And so now we, to put some relief back to the taxpayer, I was able to use that over the last couple of years and, and purchase things so it didn't get passed on to the voter, or the taxpayer.
Using funds the voters already allocated.
Right, they've already allocated. It's just sitting there. We did paving. We've used it for paving. We bought the tractor from it. So those are things that we can use to our advantage without having to, we're taking the best, our best guess on the, on the salt or the sand. And we do have a backup if we have a bad year.
Okay. Anything else?
On page 14, Mike, townlands and historical cemeteries. We seem to be budgeting a lot more than we are spending in those two areas. What's that about?
Well, the, the, for the historical cemeteries, last year, I asked the board to carry over their 5,000 they didn't use, or 4,000 they didn't use? I think it was 4,000.
It was.
And after talking with our, our maintainers for- And after talking with our maintainers for the historical cemetery, they were just kind of stuck on what, knowing what they could do with that money. They got the simple things, but they came to me and said, "We got fences that are broken down on some of our historical cemeteries, there's headstones that need to be fixed or repaired, and the cost associated with that is enormous." So, by carrying it over, it gave them ten grand, or nine, I think it was ten grand. So, I met with them, I just talked to Ken Flowers the other day about it, and Ray Ladd, and said, "We need to start working on finding that vendor that can come in, assess these stones, and give us a cost estimate." So, they've reached out, I helped them with a state entity, and they're now researching that to have a person come in here and assess where we're at. So, that five thousand, on an annual basis, doesn't get much. This is expensive, but those stones, once they're gone, they're broken beyond repair, we lose a lot of history. So, by having the ten thousand this year, they're going to start getting it done, I think it'll energize them to know where to go and how to ask for money, too.
And what's the story with the town lands budget, fifty-four, fifty?
Well, let me look at the lines.
That's page fourteen.
So, we have mowing, the park and ride maintenance, if you look at how we do the mowing, there's not one line that picks up all of the mowing and maintenance, it's spread out amongst, like, the library, or the Crystal Beach, or town lands, or the P S, the public safety building, so this is part of it. There's twenty-five hundred for that we've allocated each year for mowing and park and ride maintenance, operating supplies, and instead of it coming out of the highway budget or the tree warden budget or something else, we put money in there if they need...
I apologize for interrupting, Mike.
I want to make sure we're talking about the same section here, this is on page fourteen,
one-hundred-and-fifty-four, fifty, town lands. Everything is put in the other purchased services category, and it's thirty-five hundred dollars, but in FYE nineteen, we spent zero.
Wasn't there something that they wanted to...
It got taken out of other budget lines, and so to break this down so we can show where it was being used, that's why it's broken down under this now. It came under the mowing and stuff, when I first got here, I asked Melanie, "How do we keep track of mowing?", and a lot of this was lump sums, and then we have town lands, I'm like, "Okay, we're mowing up at Crystal Haven, we're mowing the triangle at Stasiel Road, and at Pencil Mill Road, and the park and ride." I wanted to show where it was actually being used.
Okay, so you're saying we're going to change our practices going forward, and we're going to start to charge the services to those town lands in this column?
Correct.
Sounds good.
Yes. Sorry, that was, sorry, that was a long wind with that one, it didn't really make sense.
Any other questions? If not, call the motion. All those in favor of the motion? If you find my saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, motion passes, four to one. Whatever you say, yeah, yeah, we can do that, sure.
Do you need to need these back?
No.
I've got one that's marked up, but I've got two that are clean.
If there's a clean one, I'll take it, and that way, if anybody asks for a copy of it.
Manager's report? You've given us all your report, Mike.
Yeah.
Some stuff in here.
We've got a few there for us.
Thank you, thank you.
There's good stuff in here that hasn't been...
Yep.
I know that. We have covered a lot of it, though.
Number two, under transfer station, it said, "Received consideration by the board." In that folder, the Manila folder I gave you tonight, Tim Gilbert dropped off a piece of paper showing a breakdown of money that was a surplus to the Rutland County Solid Waste District, and they want to give back a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars in surplus funds back to the participating towns, based on our votes, and that gives a percentage, it's in there, it's handwritten, so we're getting back fourteen thousand and change, it's in there, fourteen thousand, one-hundred-and-seventy-six dollars and eighty-three cents, no strings attached. Just said, "The board of selectmen can decide what they want to do with the money." I made a recommendation to keep it in-house at the transfer station, to help build a roof structure, a pole barn type, over the bulky bins, to help keep the rain and snow out of those. We're paying for that. Every time we go down and it rains, or during the winter it snows, anything that's in there that can absorb moisture or water, it does, whether it's mattresses, or, really mattresses aren't anymore, but like couches and glove seats and whatever, sheet rock, and we pay for that weight and water. So, this would be more of a long-term investment, and we're not going to get fourteen thousand, one-hundred-and-seventy-six dollars and eighty-three cents back in a year or two. But it was unanticipated money, it can help resolve the problem without having to put it in the operating budget to the voters, to the taxpayers. That's just my two cents on it. It's something I've already, I asked, and I got a quote from Ellis Construction on, or Ellis Concrete, whatever their official title is, on what their take on it was a quote, and that's what, they come up with seventeen grand, is what they quoted. Now, that's just one, I got to go out and have to get others, but that put me in a ballpark. And the other thing that happens in the winter is that when the bins, the items get frozen in the bin, and then if we take it down and they can't get it out of there because there's not an excavator or a backhoe or something available, they end up driving back with whatever portion of that load they couldn't get out of there, still in the bin, which is not really cost-effective.
Okay. The motion, gentlemen?
Yeah, we were talking about doing this a year ago, and I thought it made sense then, and I still do, so, can I make a motion that we allocate that money from the Rutland County Solid Waste, which will be fourteen thousand, one-hundred-and-seventy-six dollars and eighty-three cents? Is that approximately, or is that a firm number?
That was, whatever is on there is what the percentage can have to be.
Towards building a new pole barn over the bulky and C and D bins at the transfer station.
Second.
Okay, discussion?
I'm in favor of doing that at the transfer station, and I just want to bring it to everybody's attention that those surplus funds came from the whole town, every taxpayer in town, not just the ones that use the transfer station. Came from every citizen in town, came from Castle and University, those surplus funds. So, I just want to make that for the record.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimously. Okay, next one.
Couple ones down, it was the, again, the transfer station policies and procedures about private haulers. I asked this question last month, and I didn't write anything down, whether or not you wanted it on the agenda for tonight's meeting, so I asked, shall I put it on the agenda for next meeting, to talk about the customer list, that was, been kind of lingering for a while. And do you want to change the ordinance or not change the ordinance, or do you want to modify it, something that can be discussed, to figure out how to, let me move forward with what you want done?
Yes, but put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
Yeah, absolutely.
If it needs to be on the agenda, it needs to be discussed.
Gentlemen, how are we ever going to figure out what the percentages are up at the transfer station?
We already agreed that we wanted to discuss it and have it on the agenda, so let's do that.
And I shared with you that Chris gave, I asked Chris for a bunch of information about what we're paying, what for all these facilities, and what it costs us to get rid of garbage, that's the really bottom line, Bob's been asking for it. So, I have the data now from Chris, and also with what these facilities are going to charge next year, so we already have that figured in, and I should have that, I can pull that together by the 25th, so at that meeting, I could show you what that would look like as well.
Sure.
None, 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 none.
On that same subject, Mike, the meeting I went to at the Rutland County Solid Waste District, for some reason, they're, and I didn't get an answer to that question, for some reason, they're anticipating a huge increase at all the facilities in MSW and C and D. I don't know where they got those numbers from, but they're thinking their surcharges are going to skyrocket. I don't know what the...
I saw the one from the wheel brader, and it's going from, it's going up like three dollars and something a ton.
Yeah, I'm not talking about what they charge you to get rid of, I'm talking about the actual tonnage. They're saying all facilities, their tonages are going to be way up. That was what they said at the last meeting, I don't know what that is. I've got to get an answer to that.
When you say that, I mean, like, greater increase of people bringing stuff in?
Yeah, I guess so, and I don't know how they can figure it out with the different facilities, but that's what the words was the other night, so I don't know. I've got to get an answer to that question.
They're thinking there's going to be an increase in volume?
Yes.
Okay.
So, that's on page, oh, there's no page numbers, but three, the truck stuff, so in your, tonight, I got some stuff this afternoon at two-seventeen this afternoon, in that Manila folder, is the amortization schedule for the international that we've, that you authorized them to buy, and basically, it shows if we pay one payment per year, starting in July of two, it's on, and what I'm recommending is on, when you find that in there, it's from Peoples United Bank. On page two, I've circled it, it's, we're right there, we're paying seven thousand, let me kind of read it off your paper, seven thousand, seven-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars and five cents in interest over the course of a four-year note for that truck. That is out of the three options, whether we pay once per year or we pay twice per year. I thought that if we paid twice per year, we'd be paying less interest over time, that does not show it. I got a call from the bank, they had their supervisor look at it, and so if we start paying, we paid forty thousand dollars upfront, so we didn't finance that. Of the hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand and change for that truck, we only had to finance a hundred-and-forty-eight thousand and change. So, our next payment would be due on July fifteenth of this next year, and we pay the least amount of interest over that four-year note by doing it that way. So, you wanted to see it, so that shows you what the cost in interest is going to be, and the best approach to this, as long as, as long as the eighty thousand dollars stays in the budget for these vehicle reserves for the highway department, we'll continue to have the money available to pay for these vehicles throughout. You know, it's actually less than that when you figure it over the whole...
So, all you need from us is approval of what schedule to follow, is that correct, Mike?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, boys, what would you like to do?
Let me just say, so Lori at the bank said, "If you make a motion tonight, she can do the loan paperwork based on that," so that we can have the loan paper and you can sign it at a later date.
That's what I was looking for, I didn't find it.
Yeah, no, you can do it at a later date.
So, we need them, I'll take a stab at this.
Good luck.
Yes.
Do you want to take a stab at it, Bob?
No, 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 go ahead, Dick.
Did I not give you one, Joe?
I'm going to make a motion that we follow the amortization schedule of four annual payments for a total interest of seven thousand, seven-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars and five cents with Peoples United Bank.
Second.
Okay, motion second, discussion? Seeing done?
Well, Joe didn't get to see it, but I apologize, I must have missed his.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So, I did have a question. So, by following this schedule, we are taking forty thousand out of the vehicle reserve fund in the highway department?
This formula right here, Zach, is the forty thousand's been paid upfront, we're only financing that hundred-and-forty-eight thousand on this truck, rather than the hundred-and-eighty-eight.
But that's what all this is showing, is a hundred-and-forty-eight.
That's what we're financing.
That's what we're financing.
Okay, okay.
Heard the motion, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, Mike?
I closed my, turn that here. Nemrick, you already talked about that one, so that's it?
That's it?
It was, let me know if it's acceptable, conflict of interest policy, that's what, I'm sorry, the last one, seven B...
Did you want one of these?
Yeah, we already did that, right?
Well, it's already been, it was signed on nine July, but they were talking about the format, so I provided this copy in there, in your packet, that's the header I've been using for all the policies and ordinances and stuff like that, so if you guys are good with this, I already have the signed back page.
Oh, okay.
So, that's been signed, it's just that it was the format, I think, was the issue, so if you're happy with that format I provided, then we're good to go, and I'll get it posted.
Can you also make sure, if and when possible, that these ordinances are also on the town website?
They are, that's what I'm saying, once, now that I know that you'll approve this, I'll get this thing posted out on the town website.
And I had one question for the town manager, was, oh, can I ask him a question? Question, okay. Okay, Mike, it's in your report about the thing with the last easement on the Phase One sidewalk project, when do you think that will happen? Timeline-ish, and I won't hold you to it, just your best guess.
I got to get coordinated with Beldons and Mahollans, because Mahollan wants Dick Hall there to be their representative, because I got Beldons there, I got the town there, so I just got to get it all tied together, and, I mean, I hate to dig this time of year, because it's not going to compact the way it was, but if I don't do this now, we won't be able to get this thing moving forward, so by the spring, we can have RFPs put out and get, start soliciting bids to...
That's why I'm asking the question.
Yeah, so it really has to be done now, so, we can fix whatever, if it doesn't settle well by spring, we can fix that.
Anything else? Okay, select board comments, Dick and Joe, you have something on the police contract? We could add it under this.
Yeah, we submitted to you last select board meeting, a copy of the NEPVA contract, and we have made one change since then, and that was the one that I, hopefully you got a new page on that last Friday, and had a chance to review it, along with the rest of the contract, which has not changed in the last two weeks, and we would recommend that that be voted on and approved tonight.
Like right now, or?
Yes.
Right now.
Right now.
Right now. Make a motion, Dick, to that effect.
Can I take that for a second? I'll make a motion that we approve and accept the agreement between the town of Castleton and the New England Police Pneumonium Association Local 426, for a contract period of July one, two thousand nineteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two, as presented.
Second.
Any comments, board? Seeing done? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Now, we have to sign it. By the way, you have to sign two more copies in here, too.
Can I move on with two other things before we're signing this?
Go ahead.
This is mainly for Mike and for, well, the whole board. If my math is correct, and your town report probably is correct, there'll be approximately twenty thousand dollars in unallocated surplus after everything is done, said and done for the year.
That's correct.
I agree with your recommendation that we use that money to create two reserve accounts for this building and that building for long-term maintenance and repair.
Just to be, just so the language is clear, the reserves accounts already exist, the line items are there, because otherwise, you have to go to the voters to create a line, so there are two lines in the budget for capital reserve, capital improvements and reserve for both this building and that building.
And that money's already there?
No, no, the line, the lines are already there to put the money into.
Okay. So, in the interest of clarity, I think we can probably legally just do that without the voter approval, but I would suggest that we craft an article to ask the voters for approval to do that.
Just exactly what are you going to do?
There's...
Transfer funds from, on a side?
There's, we have a total of a hundred-and-eighty-six thousand dollar surplus from last fiscal year.
We had a hundred-and-eighty-nine.
Or a hundred and eighty-nine.
We used eighty-six.
We already allocated eighty-six of that as a board, so there's a hundred-and-three thousand left. We have a budget increase of eighty-five thousand dollars, which leaves approximately eighteen thousand dollars in unallocated surplus. If we do nothing, that will just automatically go back to reduce into the general fund. If we ask the voters to allocate that to reserve accounts, one for each of the two public buildings, is where I was going with this. My recommendation, and I...
A seed money to...
Yeah, it was your recommendation, I'm just saying it out loud and putting it out in front of the rest of the board.
Are you proposing to take money from the sale of the public buildings, the old fire station?
No, that's my third thing. This is, this is, this is the balance of the surplus from last fiscal year. surplus from last fiscal year.
Well, I, never mind. Go ahead.
That's my suggestion. I don't know what the rest of the board's pleasure is. And it's something that we don't have to make that decision tonight. I just want to get the wheels turning.
Or it could be, it could be $5,000 each and 10 goes back, whatever, whatever you decide. But all I was asking is that, we have two pretty new buildings and we put no, nothing in for deferred maintenance. And if you look at what's happened with high school, blah, 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 it's in the long term, if we can just put a little bit in when it comes time to replace the, the parking lot or the roof or a boiler or whatever, that we have the money there in a capital improvement or reserve account. It's already been established.
Three of these pages.
Sounds good to me.
Are there any guidelines for these matters? I mean, I know that if you have a property of $5 million, I mean, what percentage of that value should one contribute on an annual basis to create an appropriate reserve account for big-ticket items that can't otherwise be budgeted for?
Look, I, I don't know the answer to that, Joe. I just, I just, I'm trying to use, before the, the strike with the iron was hot, but I'll find that out for future purposes.
I certainly support the concept and the principle, but I think it'd be helpful for me to know what is the optimal, or at least the minimal, reserve fund for foreseeable big-ticket items like roofs and boilers and such. Presumably, we shouldn't expect any problems like that for probably 15, 20 years.
Right.
This is the police contract.
But at the end of 20 years, how much do we have, should we have set aside so that we can handle what comes up?
I will get an answer for you.
Okay.
You got a third one?
I got a third thing. It's actually your thing, but I'm gonna say it again, just to make sure it's still in everyone's mind, is the salt shed project is looming ahead in the future someday that we're gonna have to deal with. And Jim's suggestion was that we take the proceeds from the sale of the town office and, or what's left of it, and the proceeds from the sale of the fire station and the balance of the reserve account for weed harvesting, which has been languishing for 20-some years, and use that to create a, and I may have the word wrong, but another account or reserve account to cover our share of the salt shed project when it comes to pass, because we will, there will be some grant money, but then we'll have a match. And we anticipate that match to be upwards of $100,000. And we could have the money in the bank when the time is right to do that.
When do we anticipate having to cross that bridge?
I don't have an answer to that.
No.
Do you, Mike?
Well, we have to, the, it's a scoping study to start with, so that's a three-year, it's probably, to get an answer, like, construction going, we're talking three years.
Did we ever dig the test holes up there?
They did two. And they're, they didn't hit water, but they're not, they're only down probably like eight feet.
Who observed the test holes?
I saw them.
Pardon?
I saw them.
Yeah, was there any engineer or anybody there?
No, no. The holes are still there.
Sign three copies.
Excuse me, go ahead.
The holes are still there.
Pardon?
The holes are still there.
Holes are still, you lift it open?
Yeah, so they can see the, the, they're, they're not, they're off the beaten path. Nobody's in it, unless they're stealing signs.
All right, you heard Dick's recommendations?
Do you want to act on that tonight? We don't necessarily have to, as long as we have it for the warning.
Where I'm going with this is we have to craft at least one or two articles in the warning to accomplish this. So I wanted to get the wheels turning and get people thinking about it and deciding if we want the town manager to start putting a draft together of those two articles or what we want to do. But doing nothing isn't really a viable option, in my opinion.
Do we have a ballpark figure for what this is gonna cost?
They're saying five, at least $500,000, probably.
And our share will probably be 20%. So we're looking at 100 grand. And we have that money, if we, we have that money, we have that money, if, or most of it, if not all of it, or maybe more than that. But if we allocate that, then now, while we still have it, then it'll be there when the time is right. And when, as the things like the scoping studies and the other stuff, the engineering studies that are all gonna be required come up, we have the funds there. We can just do it.
Yeah. And if we, to, to have me move forward without knowing that, that the 20% is there, I think we're, we're gonna be wasting time and resources from the state down, down, because knowing that we have the money, or the town is willing to allocate the money, is really part of the process. So we've only got a scoping study right now. So we haven't committed any big dollars. But when they come back and say, it's, yes, you need it, this is what we, we think needs to happen, and then we start getting the engineering part, and they say, oh, it's gonna be $500,000, and we, hopefully that we don't, we've planned for that, I guess.
And although everyone on this board might be aware of it, maybe some other people in town are not, but storing salt at the Ruby site out on 4A East is, right now is a viable option. But someday, that property may change hands. They may decide to sue something else with it. And it may not be an option. And we need to have our own infrastructure to take care of that.
Which is, that's the rumor we heard, is that the, there, that may, that may change coming, we're in our last year of our lease, so it's a $4,000 a year lease. So we're in our last year. I don't know if the price is gonna be in the next one yet. We've reached out and see if we could find out. But it also said that they may open that back as a gravel pit and that, that we may lose that as a place to store a lot of salt.
Okay. Anything else, Dick? Got a few?
I'm done now.
Is there any, is there any reason we can't act on this tonight?
I think it'd be good.
Yep. Make a motion that we instruct the manager to draft an article for the warning.
So moved.
Second.
In regards, in regards to the salt shed.
Now, what's the two, what's the two lines you separated?
The other one was the allocating some of the surplus to, to reserve accounts.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Do you have to set a dollar amount on that right tonight?
No, we just have to make sure when we approve the warning, it's the right number.
We're talking $18,000, right? Is that the right number?
Yeah, give or take a few dollars. Right now, we're authorizing the town manager to craft a-
A plan to do something with that $18,000?
Plan to do, heard our call for the warning, so the voters-
Okay. You ready for the vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Now I'm done.
Where are we?
Eliza's not clear on what we just did.
Me, can I just-
We may not be clear either, Eliza's.
Well, I can, I can tell you what I-
Go ahead.
Want to have happen. The first motion would have been to have, authorize the town manager to create a warning, or to direct, craft a warning to create a reserve account for the salt shed using proceeds from the sale of real estate properties and the weed harvesting reserve account. That would be the first motion, or first part of that motion.
Okay, okay. First part of the motion. Okay.
Second part of the motion was to authorize the town manager to create another warning, or to draft another warning, to create two reserve accounts for municipal buildings, the, the town office, specifically the town office and the public safety building. Or not create, but allocate surplus funds. There, I got the words right now.
So you want to allocate those, the funds from the old fire department and the old town office?
That's for the salt shed. This would be for the operating- And for the, for the two reserve accounts for the buildings, that's out of unallocated surplus.
Joe?
Mike, did you say that those accounts already exist?
They do. They're in, if you look on your-
So the warning is to transfer fiscal 19 funds to those existing reserve-
Yeah, at this point, my motion was just for him to craft the warning, and then he can come up with the appropriate verbiage.
Right.
Can I just find out who seconded that motion?
I think that was Zach.
No, I made the motion. I don't know who seconded it.
No.
I made the motion. You seconded it.
Did I?
You were the second.
Okay.
Anything else on that?
I'm done.
Okay, Bob? You all set, Bob?
Uh, I just got a couple of things.
Sure, go ahead.
What do you, what do you guys know about all the equipment down at God? What is all that for? All those bucket trucks? The whole yard is full of stuff down there.
Oh, I haven't seen it.
You haven't seen it? There must be 15, 20 trucks down there. All lined up one side and all down the other. Is it something to do with the solar projects, or nobody knows?
No, I don't think it has to do with solar.
A lot of that looks like off, off-road maintenance for power lines.
They look like GMP trucks.
Yeah, well, they're all white, so they're not GMP trucks. But I'm just curious if you guys, you guys don't know-
A lot of those are truck vehicles, so they're off-road maintenance for power lines and things like that.
Yeah, I don't know if they're doing for maintenance. I was allowed.
What they're up to.
I can't find out.
The J and Z hail project up on Sand Hill Road, is there any updates on that? Do you know what's going on?
I was, yeah, I was talking to Janet about this earlier. I think the investors are still waiting to hear back from the company doing the scoping study.
They're doing a study?
I, I think they're, I think they're waiting for the phase two feasibility results to go back to the investors.
All right, all right. That's pretty much it all I had tonight.
Okay, Joe?
No, I'm just thrilled with-
You good, Joe?
The new conflict of interest policy.
Okay.
Thanks, Mike.
Zach?
Yes, I would like to second what Sue Day had to say earlier about the Christmas market and parade. I was there for the whole four hours. And I was thoroughly impressed for being the first year that we've done it.
Yep.
I was thoroughly impressed with the turnout and the number of food trucks that were there and vendors and just people in general.
I'd like to echo that.
Yeah.
Very, very happy with what happened.
And it was a nice mix of people from different sectors of the town.
And thank you to those who put it on.
Okay, anything else? If not, on to warrants.
Warrants or?
Warrants.
Okay, we'll make a motion. We approve warrant number 1209R for $3,750. Warrant 1209 for $202,783.78. Warrant 1205 for $7,823.73. Warrant 1129 for $5,711.50. Warrant 1122 for $332.75. Warrant 1205P for $14,018.77. And warrant 1127P for $15,070.17.
Second.
Okay, motion second. Any discussion of those warrants?
Yeah. Why, is there not a pound sign in front of 1129 and 1122? Did anyone else get that?
I didn't say the pound sign, so I wasn't worried about it.
Oh, okay.
Anything else on the warrants? All those in favor?
Aye.
Just seeing if anyone else caught.
Opposed? We have two other warrants here, and then we have a special one.
Oh, yeah. I'll make a motion. We approve warrant number 1206P for $676.30. And warrant number 1128P for $682.97.
I have same.
Second? Okay, motion is second. Any discussion?
Yeah, why are those two amounts different? Why they're always, they've always, 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 always been the same. Why are they different tonight?
What, which ones?
The two amounts for, oh, just a question. Couldn't tell you. I never looked at the warrants.
My guess would be rounding error.
I mean, it depends on how much it is. I don't, off the top of my head, I don't remember what they normally are, so.
$676 as opposed to $682.
Oh, it could have been, she took time and, or I don't know. I don't think she takes time paid off, you know, unpaid, but.
I'm just curious, because they're always the same. They've always-
You're right.
No, I remember this, this came up before, too. I can't remember what it was about. I can't remember the answer.
Does Millie get paid for the hour, or she's hourly?
No, she's, she's an hourly wage.
Hourly?
Yeah.
I can see the amounts are always-
Without looking at her-
I mean, past practice, they've always been identical.
She could have had a half hour overtime. I don't know.
It's probably in here. I just didn't.
Can I interject?
Yeah.
So according to the previous minutes, it was always, or it appears to be always, $682.97.
That's the normal amount?
That's the normal amount. So it's less.
Keep going with all the questions for Mr. Chairman again.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Can I make another motion, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Make a motion. We approve purchase order in 044295 to North Star Fireworks for the July 4, 2020 fireworks, so the sum of $7,000.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion?
Yeah, what, what department does that come out of? I mean, it's already been voted on by the voters, right? I mean, what?
Yeah, they have, in their, in the budget, they have one just for 4th of July and Memorial Day Parade. So it's in there. It's 8,450 is what their total budget is.
Oh, okay.
And a lot of this is pass-through money anyways. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Yeah, a lot of that pass-through money, Bob, that comes in from other sources, but it has to roll through. We have to write the check.
But there's a certain category for it, yeah.
Yeah. So the accountant gets to take care of where the money comes from and where, where it goes.
Just following up on Bob's question, the pound sign 1206P has a very large number for fringes. That's the, the number payroll, the number payroll was 1925 for fringes. The number was 131823.
What does that mean?
What was the, the stuff for the fire station? I don't know if it falls under fringes or not.
They started talking about specifically, I think, the town accountant's payroll.
Right.
Oh.
So that has nothing to do with the firehouse.
No.
No, I'm, I'm sorry. I thought you were talking about it.
You can't answer it, right?
No, I, I can write a note and find out for you, but I, off the top of my head, I don't know, without looking at her pay sheets.
Yeah, I mean, it would be, obviously, the bottom line is very small. The difference is very small, but that particular category of fringes is very large.
I got a feeling there's a good explanation for it. I just wouldn't know what it is.
There seems always to be. But I would like to know what that is, Mike, if you could investigate that.
I am making a note.
I was gonna say, that's all. Yeah, it should be down here. You'll count them back, right? I'm not counting.
That's-
Okay.
I leave that to Zach. He's really good at that.
How many?
Nine.
You sure?
What's this one?
Well, I think last time you and I went through this, you were off one or two.
That's what's highlighted, nine.
Yeah.
Who am I to question?
Making sure.
All you guys are signing. Any reason for recap?
Can I ask the town manager a question on another matter?
Sure.
Do you know when the Economic Development Committee is having its organizational meeting?
No, I had to put out one of those. I forgot the name of it. The calendar, asking when people can meet.
Okay.
So, no, not yet.
Fair enough. Okay. I'm done.
Did you have another piece of paper over there for, Annex B had one, should be one page for Annex, or did it get signed in there as Annex B? Did it get signed?
I think Jim signed that.
Okay. Yeah, good. Thank you.
Thought I checked that.
You all said you've got to be written.
Well, they, they wanted three copies of everything, so.
They wanted three copies of the signature page.
Well, that's a signature.
In regards to this budget thing.
For Annex B. It's, it needs a signature for, for three. I thought I printed out the all of them.
I saw three copies.
Mike can do that with him during the-
Yeah, but Jim, you only need Jim's signature on that one, so.
Okay.
That would just give clarity for the voter.
Okay.
It used to just be-
Just the one total?
Used to be the one total.
Okay.
Okay, nothing else for recap, follow-up? Any reason for an executive session? No? Okay, motion to adjourn is in order.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.